We'll call the meeting to order. Uh, first thing on the list is to adopt the agenda, but we do have one add to the new business section. Um, underneath Andrew Rathbun, coach and meal prices.
Between there, we're gonna do an add, um, an art teacher hire. So we'll add that. Joel? Otherwise, is there, I'm sorry. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. So we did an add, otherwise I will take a motion to adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Public commenter visitors, there is none. Conflict of interest disclosures, none? Correct, Chad? Okay. The next consent agenda items, um, first one is the minutes of the regular meeting that was on July fourteenth, and then also the annual meeting that was on July fourteenth, as well as the July twenty twenty-five payroll. Take a motion for those? Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The next will move into the old business of the budget. Any changes, Ellen, since the last?
Um, the changes.
So page eleven, folks.
Eleven and twelve is the, is the new budget. The changes, I just kinda did them, um, like elementary. Uh, so for general fund, elementary, there was a almost twenty-six thousand dollar increase. One was a typo, and then just insurance, 'cause there's people that took insurance that didn't have insurance. Each person that takes insurance, if they take just single coverage, it's about almost nine thousand dollars a year. So it's a big, can be a big swing one way or the other if they take it or don't take it. Um, middle school, I increased by a little over four thousand dollars. And that's one thing I found in that, we have a lot of tenured employees in there, and we pay out over seventy-five hours of sick pay, and, um, over six day, or four days of, uh, personal days, and so there's a lot of that paid out there.
So that was one that was, um, a little, yeah, a little higher. Thanks for thinking of that ahead of time, though.
Ellen, please change your own.
They're already in that one, yes, yep, from the other one, yep. High school, we actually had a little decrease in salaries. Um, guidance, we had, because of that resignation, um, that was a sixty-two thousand dollar decrease in there. Um, board of education had a five hundred dollar increase, which, yeah, wasn't much. Um, N E S C, general services, a three thousand dollars decrease. Um, fiscal services, which would be the business office, um, that was a two thousand three hundred dollar increase. Operation of plant, um, which would be like our property insurance, and electricity, and that just keeps going up and down, so I'm hoping it's actually gonna come in lower than where I have it, because this month, I think it was under eight thousand, so it's like, that's just been, yeah. Um, but that, so that increased by thirty-five thousand, five hundred, but our property insurance went up quite a bit. Maintenance, um, six thousand dollar increase, and that was due to insurance. Co-curricular, um, increase, six thousand seven hundred and thirty, and that was due to salaries.
Do you have this all wrote down? Can you send us that little slide that you're reading off of after the meeting tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, I can, yep, yep.
That'd be better than me trying to write.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, I can send this, yep.
That'd be good, thank you.
Yeah, um, and then there's transfers in, transfers out, so that's, there's some of them on here. That's just, uh, we changed the, oh, which one changed? Drivers ed, not drivers ed, sorry. Um, preschool, so there, that's on here like multiple times, because it decreases and increases in different spots. Um, and then under capital, um, elementary curriculum increased sixteen thousand, and that was, yeah, just some curriculum came in, quite a bit higher than what we had anticipated. Um, high school, we increased by forty-nine thousand, but that, so we have a, it's a federal REAP grant, and so that forty-nine thousand is, or it was forty-seven, what is it, forty-seven, seven hundred? So we have an increase in revenue, because we can use those grant dollars, and then we have an increase in expenses, because, so those equal out, yep, so we use those dollars, so we have some stuff we're getting there. Um, and sped, um, we have a hundred and ten thousand dollar increase, and that was due to a typo on my part.
Oh, okay.
So some of the, yeah, some of their, um, we did go down a little bit, uh, for the, some of the co-op services, but yeah, I had a big typo in that one that I found.
Okay. A zero.
So. Because we have to transfer it out of capital outlay into the general fund, and then we would have to transfer it from the, then we can transfer it from the general fund into, that goes into, um, food service and preschool. Yep, but you, you can't, you can't transfer it, we can't transfer it directly out of capital outlay. So we can transfer from capital outlay to general fund, and then we can transfer from general fund, yes. So that's why those are in there, right, they look like they're kinda doubled up in there, but that's the reason why.
So it'll show on the revenue side.
So it's gonna show on the rev, if you see it on the revenue side, it's gonna show a hundred thousand dollars, um, transferred in. Yep, under food service, and then, yes.
Thirty-one thousand.
Yep, yep, so that's your, that's your numbers there. What's that? That's preschool.
And preschool's still that much, even if we have it being paid? Some of it? Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could just send us.
Yeah, I don't know where that, yeah, I don't know where that's gonna land, but yeah, we'll, yeah, but that, it will.
Uh, any questions?
So with. Um.
Thanks, Wade.
So when you got, this is the new ones, so.
Yep.
Where does that put us over or under last month's?
Um, what I have, like, for general fund, um, I don't know if I have it in every one of them, but general fund, we will use, according to this budget, um, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seventy-five dollars a fund balance, and the original one was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four. So it increased by, that increased by about, what, ten? Ten thousand dollars for expenses. On that, um.
Would I look at the, I have last month's here, just the general fund, what, the total means of finance? It was five, four, two, five, three, forty-two before, and now it's five, four, three, two.
So five, four, two, five?
Yep.
That's the number.
That's the number you were wanting, yep. And then five, four, three, two is what it is now. So it went up by that difference, so.
Five, four, I can look at that one.
Seven thousand, yeah.
I just was.
That's just general fund, though, you listed off some other things that affected other, other areas, but, like, capital outlay went up.
What's that number?
So the old number was one, four, five, six. The new number is one, five, one, eight.
I should've, and I could've done that, I didn't.
That's okay.
I didn't add up all, I should've just added up all general fund together, so I would've had one.
It's easier for me to.
One number, yeah.
These are for me to go get my other ones. I was looking at last month's, so.
Okay.
Essentially, yeah, all of them, except food service, went up a little bit, even with those other decreases in there.
Yeah, I should've added all these together on here, 'cause I, to have a total. 'Cause if I added all these up, that would be our difference in.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, we should be able to pull it up the last sheet we have.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
And then I laid on the, um, table, the levies, so that's what will be, and that's the max levy for everything.
That is.
I laid it, yeah, I laid it on there, yep.
It's on letterhead.
It's on letterhead, yep. So that would be the levies that we need to send to the.
Is this something that we have to, like, vote on?
Well, yeah, so we had, yeah, so we have to adopt the budget and, um, the levies, what's that?
It'll be part with the levies, yes, okay, it'll be all together.
It's all together, yes, yep, we're certifying those levies and approving the budget. I thought we were doing it this month, I don't know.
Either one, we were ready, we were gonna do it now, but if we weren't ready, we'll do it in September. So the, the one that you got today is the latest with these levies, so it'd be if you guys are ready to adopt it or to vote on.
Do the levies change?
What's that?
Do the levies change?
Do they change? No, no, from what I presented before, all the levy stuff is the, would be the same.
You don't anticipate any adjustments to now, I mean, do you meet the other changes that you can think of?
Not that I can think of, I mean, you know, like I said, we've had, like, some curriculum come in, you know, some of the expenses there, but that's, that's all, I mean, that stuff should be pretty much all done, I mean, unless some, something comes up throughout the year, but then that wouldn't, yeah.
That would happen anyways.
Wouldn't happen, yeah, it would happen anyway, so I just, I don't foresee anything else. I mean, we got another, um, update from, like, the co-op, and yeah, but just look at, you know, going through everything again. I went through, kinda looked at all the salaries and all that kinda stuff again, and benefits, and.
Probably safe to assume we'll probably be maxing levies by fall.
Yeah, with, and especially 'cause we weren't, the only one we were not maxed at was sped, but now with, um, we have the director and two placements, it's like, it's, we're gonna have to max it, because.
Our spend is there?
Two placements?
Yep, yep.
And you have to say any of those are expensive.
It's expensive, yeah.
Do you guys, are you feeling ready to, to motion on it and adopt it, and that's our final, and then we don't have to do it in September?
Doesn't sound like it's gonna change much.
Yeah, right. All right. Any other questions before I take, take a motion?
Want to do it all in one? Levies and.
Yeah, we can do it all in one, is it, yeah, you're adopting the budget with.
With the levies.
Yep.
Yep.
The resolution for the levies.
Yeah, adoption of the annual budget. Should I read this? Is that what this is?
You can if you want, I don't, it doesn't make a difference, but that's, yeah. That's just the resolution that'll go into the, and that'll go into the newspaper, too. The resolution will go in the newspaper in the minutes.
With the budget?
Yep. Yeah, and I, what I'm gonna do, 'cause last year we posted, like, just the changes in the budget, and, um, when I was at Business Manager Conference, they suggested just, a lot of them, they just will repost, just put this whole thing right in there. So it's a lot easier, so you don't have to go in and.
You put both these right in there.
Yep.
Both of those will go right in the, yep.
Yeah, I think that'd be perfect.
Yep.
Can see exactly how it's supposed to be. Okay, well, then I'll take a motion to approve the final budget.
Joel makes the motion.
Second.
Tony, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, great, thank you. Next is to look at the financial report for the month ending in July. So that's starting on page ten. Nope, that's payroll, page eleven. Well, that's with the budget, then so thirteen, really, yeah.
Thirteen, yeah.
Thirteen through. Eighteen. Any questions there, or can I take a motion? Take a motion.
So moved, Wade.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next is the bills. Page nineteen. I did have some questions that I didn't have time to ask about ahead of time. Um, I was just gonna jump to Titan Machinery was a pretty large one. Is that just all the bus maintenance before the school starts, I imagine?
Lift all inspection, yep, bus inspections, yep.
It's kind of a repeat this time of year.
And then, um, second, on twenty-one, bottom, University of Minnesota, Twin Cities, no name under there, who would that be, do we know?
Yeah, those are, uh, we receive, we house the Thomas Peterson Scholarship, so, um, those are just disbursements. I don't know, I don't know if the names are on all of them, but.
Oh, 'cause.
They should be on.
The last one, University of Minnesota, Twin Cities.
Oh, oh, that one is, um, on a good list.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, for some reason, I don't know, they don't want the student's name on the, I don't know why, on that one.
On that one?
Oh.
Yeah, 'cause most of them, we write it to the college on that, yeah. But yeah, there's just a in and out thing on that.
Mm-hmm. I remember seeing.
I knew that, but I just was.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Other questions on bills, for anyone?
Lot of software stuff, not a thing we can do about that, is there?
Well, no, this is all the stuff for the beginning of the school year, I mean.
I mean, it's.
Yep.
What do we do? I mean, what, what, what does the school do? You just gotta pay it and be done with it, huh?
It's all stuff we use.
There's a lot of, lot of stuff.
Yep, it is.
Yeah.
I think them computer things are gonna catch on, too, so I don't know if we're gonna be able to get rid of them, so.
Agreed.
Yep, I don't think it's gonna change.
Anyway.
Anything else on the bills?
I didn't have anything.
You got? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the bills.
Joel's seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the bread bills.
Bread bids.
Bids.
So we received two, one from Maynard's, and the other one from, um, Bimbo Bakeries. And I would say, well, suggest that we do the, um, bids from Maynard's, 'cause actually the Bimbo, they don't meet our grain requirements that we have to have.
Hate that name every year.
I know, yeah, Bimbo Bakeries. But yeah, they don't, they actually don't meet, because like on our buns and stuff, we need to have two grains, and they're only one point seven five.
All right.
And the ones from, um, Maynard's, which is panel gold, they do, meet all the specs.
Is pricing much different, out of curiosity?
Um. I don't know, I've never really looked at that.
To me, if, if Maynard's was like super high, I might question that compared, but.
I don't know, that they don't meet, I mean, the thing is, these other ones, the other one doesn't meet the specs.
I know, I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't know, these are like, like this one only is like six buns in a thing, so I don't know, I didn't calculate it out, what it would be for, um.
Pretty critical to meet the standards.
These come in thirty.
I mean, if you, if you don't meet the standards.
We, we have to meet the standards, yeah.
You gotta meet the standards.
Or you go for someone else.
Yeah.
I guess I moved to accept Maynard's.
Thanks, Wade.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the.
Procurement?
Yep, mm-hmm, plan for child nutrition, starting at page twenty-three.
And we didn't make any changes to it, we just have to approve it every year, so nothing has changed in there, but this is, more or less tells us how we have to, like, that's why we're, we do all these bids and stuff, have to approve them, 'cause that's in the procurement plan.
Through page thirty-one. Questions, if not, I'll take a motion.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the hire of Kim Holt as a para professional.
Yep, uh, everybody probably knows Kim Holt, so she's gonna be, uh, our para down in the preschool room. We got some kids coming in, some needs, so, uh, she'll be helping Eda and Rhonda down in our preschool room.
Question?
Do you normally have one in there?
We normally have one, and then it's, this'll be a second one, yeah.
Okay.
Take a motion?
So moved, Wade.
How many kids we're gonna have in preschool, do we know?
Probably.
Uh, thirty.
Oh.
Thirty-two.
Okay.
And some with some pretty severe special needs that don't get a special support, so, that's why.
Sorry. Asking for a second, you were interrupted.
Yeah. No, it's okay, so I got Wade's motion. Leah, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next is the hire of Kelsey Monier as para professional.
Yes, carry, or excuse me, uh, Kelsey will be, um, replacing our, um, one of our two high school paras that had left, so. She, I think she, right now, she's working at the law firm, so she'll be, she will be joining us.
Take a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next is the hire of Colleen Bakey as cook.
Colleen has been on as a custodian here, um, and just getting to be a little too much, so she's gonna be transitioning over to the kitchen, so we are in need of a, um, custodian to take her place, so, you know, talk about that in my report as well.
Take a motion?
So moved.
Joel? Take a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next is Hunter Wejji, moving up to assistant football coach.
Yeah, I should've, uh, done this when we accepted his resignation from middle school, but he will be joining the, um, uh, high school, uh, program, so, um, obviously, we're doing Hunter for the high school program, and then Andrew Rathbun is our next one that we're gonna take action on. He will be filling in for Hunter's in the middle school position.
Awesome. Approval?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Then the next was Andrew Rathbun for middle school football coach. Take a motion right away?
Motion.
Tony?
Second.
Can we have discussion on there, if we're, if we're missing the, how's this gonna work out with, with his duties?
It works out great, 'cause he's done it, he's done about the same time they're gonna start practice every day, so. Outside of him maybe having to leave early, three, four times, it works out, it works out good, so.
And they have practice starting at three?
Right after school.
Right after school.
Right after school, yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye, is where I left off.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Uh, the next was the add, we're adding Shane Winkle as art teacher.
Yeah, this worked out great, we had a, um, actually a couple of applications at the end of last week, so we turned around, and we interviewed the gentleman today, and, um, he's actually got twenty years of experience as a para in the Lake Preston School District, and, um, he went back to school this past year and finished up his degree in art, um, and student taught in Brookings, and lives in Oldham, and he's willing to commute, and, um, we, ironically, I told him I'd give him a jingle tomorrow morning, or he made the comment, "I'd love to get in here as soon as possible when you offer this," so we called him when he had left about five minutes later, and he turned around, he spent the whole day here going through inventory, and we got him set up, and he's, yeah, and he.
Wow, fastest hire you've ever.
Yeah, and he's able to, he's able to be here all week for, for everything we've got going on, so it really turned out good, getting a certified staff member in that position.
Really quickly.
Yes.
Awesome. We'll have to meet him when he.
You bet.
Take a motion?
Joel moves. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the meal prices.
So, all the, quite a few meal prices that are gonna have to go up, um.
Do you have a printout for us by chance?
Oh, I did not print it out, sorry. Lunch for, um, preschool through eight, or PK, I should say, yeah, through eight, is going up ten cents from three sixty-five to three seventy-five.
Okay.
Um, nine to twelve lunch will go from three seventy-five to three eighty-five.
Okay.
Adult lunch will go from five to five twenty-five.
Okay.
Seconds will go from one eighty-five to two dollars. And milk was forty cents and going up to fifty cents. So I realize I probably, if we wanted to do these in July, I need to have, or parts of the food service app done before that.
Well, this happened.
Yes. Yeah.
True, I mean, it would've happened anyways, wouldn't it, like?
Well, if I'd had the one, no, one of the forms that we have to fill out, well, actually both of them, that you have to submit with the application, would have, I mean, you have to beat it all before you can send the application in. So that's my goal for next year, is have it done before July.
That's good.
The only one we don't know, so like the adult one, they, there's a minimum that we have to do for adult, um, and, 'cause we were at five, and I think that went up to five fifteen or something like that, where we had to be at. So that one would've had to gone up anyway, but.
And these were just all things they told you after you submitted, so we have no control.
There's like all the paperwork you fill out, and based on, you know, the, 'cause it, it's a big process, because there's a lot of, you have to go through and have to take a whole week's worth and figure out what your meal costs are, and all that kinda stuff, and yeah.
And then there was one that didn't change?
The breakfast did not change.
The six through eight lunch, sorry, I must've missed that.
Nope, so preschool through eight.
Through, oh, that was the same.
Yes, yep, is all the same, so that's the same, so that's, sorry, I'm there, yeah. Yes, yep, it's all the same, so that's the same, so that's, sorry, on there, yes, on the last one, we did each one separately, but yeah, so. PK through five and then six to eight are both going up to three seventy-five from three sixty-five. Breakfast stayed the same.
And, and these are what they have to be, these are what the state is telling us we have to do, when you have no.
Yes, yes. Because like I said, there's a form that you fill out, and it tells you exactly what you're, you know, like, okay, this was our, these were our lunch prices last year, you fill the information, and it tells you this is what you. What you have to meet for an average, and then the same, like with the seconds and milk, that really went up. But we have to be there to meet, because you have to have a zero at the bottom, not a negative, and.
It's only a two and a half percent increase, you know, it's not a lot.
It is for some families.
Yeah.
Two and a half percent.
Lot for some families.
Ten cents.
Yeah, when they can't.
It adds up over right.
Can't meet their meal bill now.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and just keep encouraging the free and reduced lunches as much as you can, I guess.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so some families, when you say some families, they're on free and reduced lunch, so that's, how much does that cost?
So if they're on free lunches, then it doesn't cost them anything, the only thing, if they have.
If they have students that, like in elementary that have milk, they, that's not covered under free and reduced, so they would still have to pay, if they had milk every day, it's gonna be fifty cents a day. For milk, yep, and then if they're, and if they would have any seconds, stuff like that, that's all, I mean, that's all out of pocket. And then for reduced, breakfast is thirty cents and lunch is forty cents, so they still would be responsible for that, plus any seconds and any classroom milks.
Okay.
How are we doing free and reduced lunches, how are we doing on that, are we getting, is that, that was a concern about getting families signed up that need to be signed up? Still is a concern, or we?
No, we're doing.
That'll be somewhere.
Can't get it out, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, everybody, every family is giving, given an application, it's whether they fill it out and turn it in.
Is it, can you retroact, like if you got somebody that's not paying their bill, you sign it for free and reduced, doesn't take care of the bill, I'm assuming?
Nope, and it goes forward from when they fill it out, so if they wait till the middle of the school year and fill it out, we can't go back to the beginning of the school year.
Okay.
So back to school fares, and hopefully you get them to wait.
Well, right.
Which is good, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's what we hand out, some will just fill them right out and hand them right back in.
Ideally, yeah. So we have to approve those increases?
Yes.
I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Wade?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Fuel prices is next.
Yep, and we just got one bid on fuel prices from Dual County Farmers Union, and that came in, the Roadmaster Clear Diesel number two at. Three dollars, four forty-nine a gallon, and Roadmaster Clear Diesel number one at four dollars and. Four, five cents. Zero four nine.
So three four nine?
So three dollars, four four nine, forty-four.
Oh, forty.
Forty-four nine, yep, four four nine. And then the road, the diesel one was four dollars and then zero four nine.
Are those increases from last year, because I don't have those.
Yes, they are.
And what did we do last year, Tony?
Was there ten cents under the pump price?
Well, that's what we did on the, for, was that number two? Yeah, for number two, it was ten cents under the, and then the. Number one was four oh two a gallon.
Last year's was four oh two?
Last year's, yep, number one diesel was four oh two, number two, it was ten cents off the posted price at the time of delivery.
And how did we do on that, do we know?
I have no idea.
Well, I know number two diesel is not three forty-five right now, it's cheaper than that. Number one was never over like three sixty, three seventy in the winter last year.
When does this go into effect? Contract date or whatever date?
As soon as we get fuel, yeah.
So. Do we wanna look into something like we did last year, then?
We'd be better off if they would do that, yeah. I mean, gamble that it's gonna go up.
We just asked last year, you know, we negotiated.
And there's a different manager here, you know what I mean, this year now, yep, yep.
But he's somebody we can ask too, then.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Yeah, I think worth it, asking.
I think it worked last year, I think.
You're just gambling, if it goes up, it's gonna cost us, but. Diesel's been like the same price all summer.
I don't see, I have no idea what diesel is, so I.
Ten cents all summer.
I'll look to you guys on that.
It's been low, three forty-five.
Yeah.
Does it tend to go up though in the winter, in general?
Well, the number one.
Number one's more expensive, but I don't think it's ever over four dollars.
So we paid, you said last one, number one was three.
Three seventy, three eighty.
At least to save some money, maybe.
So do you understand your ask?
Not really, because I don't really think about fuel.
Well, last year I called up the guy, and we gotta, I called up the manager, just talked to him.
I would think we'd wanna be ten cents under the price of number two and number one, because it worked with the number two. Instead of, like last year, we contracted a price for number one and tried it on the number two.
Yeah, you're right.
I would think we'd wanna go ten cents under, all across the board, if they will.
Is that covered delivery, then?
I don't.
Is it, I mean, I'm just asking.
I don't know what the delivery.
At the pump price versus the delivery price, it used to be cheaper delivered, but I don't know if that's the case.
Right, because you're buying bulk.
Yeah.
This is more than at the pump.
Yeah.
Are you guys calling then, or?
I'll call up and ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, do the same thing, or you want it, Tony, or you want me to?
You can.
Okay, and then, I don't know the manager there. And I didn't know the last guy either, so, but our ask is, ten cents under the pump price, is that what you're saying?
At the time of delivery.
At the time of delivery, okay.
I can make you a copy of this, after that, you have his name and stuff here, too.
And maybe last year's too. Joel can have the last year's.
Did that work?
So we won't.
The thing is, we're gonna have to have fuel though before, so I don't know what price we'll have at that, because we have to run out of fuel before.
Next meeting, do they just give it to you at the price?
Last year, it's.
Basically, this is the only bid, so they're either gonna bend and do that, or we're stuck with that.
Yeah. I think that's what we did last year, we.
We just approved it, yep.
Unless we could get that.
And so then re-approve the next.
We didn't re-approve it, we just, we approved that we were getting it from Dual County Farmers Union, and.
Last year they gave us two options, though.
They did, yes, but plus it changed then after that, because he re, because he resent it.
Because we split.
He resent it last year after that we had approved it, and we got the, yeah, the ten cents, because that was already, the ten cents off the posted price. That was an alternate option for the number two, but the number one, there was no other alternate, but he did come down after, Joel talked to him. He did come down, they did come down on the price of that also. So if I remember correctly, I think we just did the motion that we'd get it from Dual County Farmers Union, you know, after requesting a reduction in price or whatever.
And they give it to you in writing, which is what we want?
Yes, because that's what we had last year, they had updated it on eight thirteen, and then this was the contract then that we had.
True, sign the contract with the rates, okay, so I'll take a motion to approve it as is with Dual County. See if we can get it changed.
Motion? Quite understand how this motion's all gonna work then, so what is the motion gonna be?
We're contracting with Dual County as our fuel carrier.
Depending on what, what we do.
And then the rates, we'll have to sign a contract.
We're contracting in this meeting, we're not signing anything for a contract, I'm assuming.
Right.
Right, until you talk to them.
Yeah, that's my assumption, otherwise.
Home tomorrow.
We just want to.
Contract is with.
Yeah.
The contract is with, we're voting on, but what the contract is, we're still negotiating.
So you still need a second? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we need to surplus the bus.
This is the bus that we have to destroy to get our rebate, so the process is to surplus it before doing so. I'll explain where I'm at in that process in my report.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll get into the academic retreat. So I'll let you two take it away.
Han and Ralph.
Oh, Ms. Han, I'll let you take it away.
I'll do the last three years by myself.
Yeah, that's true. Tag your it.
We have everything in these pre white folders. We'll start with that very first page, this is the ACT spotlight. What all of these graphs show us is overall we're doing better than the state average. The first graph, that's the ACT summary percentage, that just illustrates the percentage of our students who are gold, but that are at or above benchmark, and then in the blue. Blue eye below the benchmark, and then the next one over to the right, percent reached at or above benchmark, this is according to the number of subjects. Thank you for remembering the microphone. This is according to the number of subjects, so you can see that we have fifty-two point five percent of our students are at or above benchmark in five of the subjects, which is pretty awesome. And then the year-over-year averages, I really enjoyed looking at that, because you can see how not only are we above the state. We also have increased each year since COVID. The light gray is twenty twenty, and then twenty twenty-four is the blue.
We're always, we're just.
Yeah, it's.
Going up though, that's good.
Put it on backwards.
So you just want the blue line being the highest, and it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Do they consider composite a subject?
Or it's just overall?
That's just their overall.
It's one of the five.
Okay.
I was confused.
So that's our, that's our ACT.
This is really great, thanks for adding this, since this is gonna be kind of a new standard.
So in the top left graph up there with the gold and the blue, as long as you got a bigger number in the gold, you're above average, is that the case?
That's what we want.
Nice, I'm ready, Joel.
I've just, I've never seen a graph or a deal like that, but I'm just making it, you know. Science looks really well.
Science is really good.
Nice. So Mr. Elf, you can take it away from here.
All right, we'll move into the MAPS data, a lot of these graphs are graphs that we've used in the past and received good feedback from you guys. Just updated along throughout the way, just in brief, looking, or not in brief, but when we're looking at things. We're very pleased across the board, direction of where things are going, we haven't seen those huge drops. Some classes have made some great, great gains, which is awesome to see, especially one class particular that's kind of been. Down there along the way, has made some really great jumps each year now, and are hopefully getting them back to where, back to where we need to, so. Each, each page is broke down, kindergarten through eleventh grade, and again, we don't test our seniors, so. The pie graphs are breakdown of the math, and then it's the reading, and then the language usage. Language usage, we don't test until third grade, or excuse me, second grade, so that's why you only see two graphs on K one. As you thumb through, you know, just looking at the visual of it, the typically seventy-five percent range is above that national average that MAPS has set. As their growth ben, or growth, academic progress measurement.
Does that compare so far from last year to this year?
That we'll get to in the next.
Okay, I'm just doing that naturally right now.
Just out of memory, this looks good.
It's, yeah, you can just tell though, that they're.
Yeah, the more orange you see, the better, right?
Right, it's growing, the orange is growing.
The orange continues to grow in most areas, and, and in all areas, you know, that doesn't. Show that we're struggling in one area of either math, or reading, or language over another one, so. Each of them are performing well at all of those areas, so. Again, that's more just that visual piece, so that you can see it, I know the RIT numbers and that type of thing necessarily doesn't mean a whole lot to, to you guys as you look at it, but that's the, the standard that MAPS sets. So you get that, for example, seventh grade, two twenty-six point seven three is the national case, or average for seventh grade, and then. The graph shows above and below, and then the pictures depict that, so.
Can I just say that they made a huge jump in math? It was like almost the seventh grade, the now seventh grade, from their sixth grade year to seventh grade year, they went from forty-six percent below national to twenty. That's a cool thing.
It's awesome.
I mean, on all their scores, actually, they, they did awesome, so that year did, did well for them.
So the next one, and we can gladly answer any questions, but I'm just gonna kind of go through the documents that we have. The next one is that tracking piece that we, you guys kind of asked us for previous, or prior to last year. Kindergarten, obviously, it's the first year they've tested, so. They only have the one, but as you go through each grade level, and we stuck with the orange and the blue, just to stay consistent on the pie graphs versus this bar graph, but this is a nice. Nice picture of their progress throughout their years of testing, so. If you get to like that seventh grade one that Danae was talking about. Maybe I'll find it. They will be page numbered next year, I just figured that out, what's the deal here?
We'll just keep going.
Yeah, I mean, that seventh grade group has made some great gains, and.
Which is surprising, because it's kind of their first year in the middle school, and that'd be maybe a little shocking, but doing well.
All our high schoolers.
All the high school scores are really, really strong, which is what we want, you know? We're introducing them to things in the elementary and middle school, and with goals, and, and hopes of them being successful in high school, and the data is reflecting that, that. We have some great students, so, and great teachers that are teaching the content.
Yeah. And do we have any like major shift in curriculum last year? This year we're having a little bit of a change, right?
Yeah, this year we have some stuff going on in the elementary, but.
So we'll see how that changes, if anything.
Yeah, yeah, and I, you know, elementary, taking a test, it's, it's, you never know how it's gonna go.
Right.
I'm pleased with the elementary scores too, we haven't seen a big dive or anything like that, so. Continue to make those small gains each year, and. Highlight those. The next one with the bar graphs, again, the, the blue, the orange, and the gray, those are just a breakdown of the district as a whole. Blue is the elementary, middle school is orange, and the gray is the high school, you can see that the high school scores, you know, each year have continued to, to increase. Seen a little bit of drop from last year with our reading, or math achievement in the elementary, but nothing that's crazy alarming, or, you know, really stands out, is, is this a curriculum thing, or is this. Something we need to look at, so.
I was pretty pumped to see the jump, if you look at the reading one in the high school.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on what might be contributing with that reading, as, as far as just any, anything that.
What year did we add in, like good English, though? I'm wondering if.
I don't honestly know what year that was. It could, I'd have to look back and see if that was, has been a, a factor in it, very well could be.
It's, it's hard to know, though, because it went up in all of the grade levels, so it would be hard to target it to one specific thing.
Right.
In high school, in elementary, there's one curriculum, you know, so you would know more than.
Yeah. And yeah, next year at this time, we'll have used a new curriculum for a year, will we see a, a drop, will we see an increase, you know, it's a, a good way to measure some of that stuff, too.
But even a drop in the pursuit. But even a drop in the first year.
First year, a drop is probably not out of the norm.
It's maybe some.
Probably expected.
Yep. Teachers need to learn it and they need to.
So give it a few years.
Get used to teaching it and give it a couple of years and I think we'll see, see some great growth.
Yeah.
We're getting far enough away from the COVID dip.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's nice, yeah.
And the last one on there, um, it's just a different way to look at all of this other stuff that we've already given you. This is just a report that's taken right from, um, the program. A report that we can print out. Shows the math, the reading, kind of gives you a better maybe number of how many are on that break of being proficient or being, um, in a certain percentile.
So you're in the, um, yellow, green and blue are in the.
Proficient, correct, yep. And in maths, they've always done the forty-first percentile ever since it came apart that they are recognizing as proficient. And then that just goes through and breaks down each school, uh, with each academic area. It also gives you a little snapshot of the grades as well at the bottom picture. The first one, first graph is the whole culmination of all of the elementary and then the next one is a breakout of which ones, so. As we continue to go, you know, the, you like to see more of the blue and that green up as we approach fifth grade and that's kind of what it shows us in, in a lot of these is that those tend to increase, so.
Yeah, but an interesting gap between three and four grades of the, the lower numbers kind of increasing a little bit, that's a little curious.
That could even just be a higher number of students in special needs or.
Yeah, for sure.
Students who have moved in.
Yeah, the numbers. Kindergarten, I feel like that's just like terrible to even do a testing on because they come with not a lot of background.
And I do like, I do like that we've, are waiting and looking at the entire year versus looking at this at a winter time or, you know, after the first test. I think this gives us a good read of, of their year and the growth that they made. Now, we look at the first tests that we do to the winter tests that we do as a staff, or you know, my, our teachers do, but.
Sure.
Um, I think just this whole wrap-up is nice to see the, the full end picture.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm trying to think, some of these students have had math testing now for how many years?
A lot, yeah.
Probably its strength was time goes on.
Yeah, no point, yeah.
Could we say seven years or is it more than that?
Longer than when I've been here, yeah.
They're just used to it. Just a good thing too.
Which is, yeah.
There's a lot more you guys can look at on your time. If you have questions, be happy to, to walk through it and explain it to a little bit better degree.
Do you have? Did I mean to cut you off?
Nope, you're fine.
Did you have any like major takeaways? Every year you do this, anything you wanted to say you're gonna, okay, this is maybe one area to look at?
Yes, I don't know necessarily when we're doing and compiling this for you guys if we have any huge takeaways, but when we look at it throughout the year and, you know, each event, what are our areas of, of strengths and weaknesses, so to speak? I feel like we've looked at it and we look at it all year long, so necessarily putting it on paper or gathering it for you guys, I don't have any major ones that stood out. Other than I, I don't know, I feel like our kids are, are doing, and our staff and our teachers are doing a phenomenal job on things, so.
Do any of these, I'm sorry, I'm asking all the questions.
That's all right.
Oh, that's good.
When, so there's always, obviously, you, you guys drill down to the student level and we don't do that. Do you guys find that there's like students excelling like really, really well and how to move them and advance them? And then obviously you look for ones that are, um, picking it up as quickly as they should, so are we adjusting both, both ends, I guess is my question?
Absolutely. I think, uh, um, we're really going to utilize this in our new reading curriculum because it, or our phonics and that piece of it. Because it really, if we go in and look at an individual kiddo, it'll, it'll give you the areas that they're missing or the areas of really good strength that you can keep moving them on forward. But it's really, I think, you know, we have to back up. If they've missed a skill from first grade and they're now in third grade, this program is also going to allow us to go back and do that with some intervention pieces and some small group approaches that we're going to be taking going forward.
So we've had the new language, reading, whatever for one year now?
No, this will be, we're just starting it, yep, this will be year one for the ninety-five percent group curriculum.
No, going to. And I think that's one of the biggest values of these tests is to help find those.
And we're, we're going to utilize, um, in the elementary, we're, we are strictly going to utilize, um, they have one screener type thing with the curriculum. But then we're also going to be utilizing a lot of the MAPS data to find where their holes are at and that kind of stuff, so.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Does the new curriculum work with this? Do the teachers have to like manually do it or is it?
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm going to be looking at a lot of, a lot of data crunching and getting kids into the right intervention groups and, um, Mrs. Swenson and I will be diving into that along with the, the title teachers, so.
Great. I'm going to be, you don't ask them questions, anybody else? Thanks for reviewing it and putting it in a nice binder.
Yeah, you do a wonderful job in explaining this stuff to us and I know when you started looking at these, those three, three years ago, a year or four years ago. It's easy to pick things out here when I'm looking for after I've seen five of them, six of them, you know. That pumpkin in blue chart, that's a pretty good one.
I know, she asked if we could change the colors and I said, no way.
Would you want a yellow or red and black or something? Those are cool colors.
We utilize the school colors.
Oh, sure. You'd use a lot of black ink or mostly red ink, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
So that's just a review, there's nothing to approve or anything, but then that ties us into, um, the next topic was the strategic plan for academics. Thought that'd be timing to.
I've got an extra hand out there. I'm going to talk about the pages five and six and then I'll talk about the last page in my superintendent report. Sat down with the two principals and went through this, our action steps and what we're doing to, uh, do this. And I'm, I'm pleased to say I think we're really on track with, with everything on here. But I'm going to go through these, uh, for you as a board and just explain some of these things. The first thing on here is, is doing what we just did and that's an in-depth data review, um, and talking about exactly what we just got done talking about here for the last ten minutes. Helping students who are struggling and, and, um, who are behind grade level and, and getting their, getting their goals met. Number two, um, I will tell you right now with all of the juniors taking the ACT here, starting this year, uh, we're going to have a real focus on ACT prep. We know that's, our overall composite scores are going to be going down, but we're going to do the best we can to provide, provide our kids to get ready to take this. I know Katie's already talked about, um, some of the things and I don't know if you want to talk about some of the things you've already got in place for this year.
Yeah, we're planning on utilizing Methodize, um, which is available for all of our students through S E My Life. And we'll give them structured time during study halls to be able to go through it. And there will be kind of an accountability piece where we know that they'll all be working through it, but it will be at their own pace, but it'll be guided by the study hall teachers. And then I'll keep track of where everyone is to make sure we're all doing it with fidelity. Because we all know with, with tests, a lot of it is learning how to read the test, not necessarily just the content too. Especially with the ACT.
So we'll see how that, we'll see how that, that pays off. Granted, that's, that's not until the spring that they have to take that assessment. And every school district in the state right now is going through the same thing, so the good thing about it is we're all starting from new and we're going to talk about what works, what other schools are doing too and, and, uh, get some information. Maybe we can improve it the following year, so.
There's the opportunity scholarship with that too, right? I mean, that, that is a, yeah, that's about seventy-five hundred or something?
Uh, twenty-four on your ACT, but, oh, the, the dollar, excuse me, yes.
There's a financial.
Yes, there's a financial.
It's a motivation.
Yeah, there's definitely a carrot.
Those that are going to use it, yeah.
Yep.
Good idea, good thought.
Uh, number three, uh, the admin and school board looking at real life, hands-on electives if they are, are financially feasible. I don't know as if we're looking at adding a lot of electives right now. Actually, we just added one with the absence of, of, uh, absorbing our school counselor position. Katie spent basically June not sleeping, wondering how we're going to fill that void in our middle school. But Brian Tweet's actually taken on our sixth grade class and providing an elective for him and we're doing some STEM stuff with Legos with our sixth graders. So that's some real hands-on stuff to get him, to get him into some STEM stuff. So we just ordered that stuff today, so that was a.
But Katie, you're, that's kind of like your responsibility, right? I would put that under you as a high schooler, but maybe I'm saying wrong. But looking at our electives and what's out there and what, what do we have and what should we look into? Like, you're just doing that as part of your job naturally, right? So you'll bring things to us as you see fit, so that's how we'll get involved.
And that's, that's what our kids, you know, if you look back at our student responses when, when Gail came in here, they wanted to do more hands-on, hands-on type things too, which I've shared with staff and I'm going to do again tomorrow too, so, uh, that's what the kids enjoyed. Uh, number four, ensuring the previous year's test results are discussed with the previous year teacher and current year teacher, that right now is just protocol for us. That's just a part of what we do on Fridays and principals take care of that stuff. Friday P D will be set aside for these discussions, which I just talked about, and I'm going to talk about another opportunity that I have coming up with, with MAP testing here this fall too in my report. Number five, we, we've kept this on here, if the school board implements, uh, any system of change, there will be training sessions held for, for parents to attend annually. I think, you know, I know we did a technology night last year. A lot of the stuff, even the, the stuff we've implemented with the online registration and, um, online, uh, physical stuff this year, we, we've put that out and, um, it kind of negates the, the need to meet. And if they got questions, they can call, but at the same time, if it was a, it was a huge system of change, we would, we would definitely meet with, with our stakeholders. Number six, and this is something that actually came out. Good luck. This actually came out in our student interviews too, is a little less screen time and doing some more hands-on stuff. So I'm going to be bringing this up with the staff tomorrow at my in-service, uh, as well as, um, and that's traditional instruction and, and, and doing some of that stuff versus, versus screen time. And the, and the teachers are cognizant of, of that as well. Number seven, uh, this is what we're doing right now, establishing a culture of high expectations and accountability. This is, really encompasses everything that we're doing. If you take a look at number seven and number nine, um, working towards a fostering a culture of learning and promoting a growth mindset. These are really what's tied into our CSI, uh, initiative right now. And for the most part, they're just kind of some warm fuzzies. And number eight, uh, the map goal setting, uh, with the teachers utilizing MAP testing, um, in conjunction and, and not only looking at them, but setting goals, which they're doing with their kids. You know, and, and Wade alluded to that too, that some of these kids have been taking this for seven or eight years, so they know what their, what their RIT score is, they know what they have to get to. That's, for some of them, it's a, it's a, it's a carrot for them for the most part, so. So i- unless you guys have some, some changes, I mean, even the wording, we were good with, with what's on here. And it's what we're constantly working towards.
I think he looks good.
He looks good.
Yeah, very good. Just what we talked about today real well, so.
Appreciate that. And all the, there's the extra effort around that ACT, but I, you know, that's just kind of where it's going, I guess, so appreciate that.
Yeah, no changes here. That's good. Move it as is. You want to talk about this hostage or wait?
What's it, I could, I could talk, we could talk about it now, it's not, I took, it's not on my report. I could talk about this, it was just a convention, I think, uh, um, all the admin went and then, uh, three board members, Joel, Leah and, uh, Danae went on the first day, so. And you guys add what you want. We listened to Kimo who talked about school vouchers for about an hour, which was very interesting. They're not a real positive thing as, and obviously you've got a gentleman there and it was in favor of public education, but, you know, what it's basically going to lead to would be, lead to our state funding two different, two different things for, uh, two different school systems, uh, the public school and the private. So, um, we're well aware that there's going to be some legislation coming down the pipe on this and it's, it's good that everybody gets versed in, versed on this. And I know I shared a lot of that with you last year and I will do the same too, so. In addition to that, I attended, um, I attended, Hannah and I sat in on, on one on generational gaps between, you know, Gen Z, baby boomer, boomers, millennials and, uh, what kids grew up with and how that works in the workplace, especially in a school setting when you're working with, you know, me who grew up on a rotary phone versus someone that's growing up on a, on a cellphone and just how, how do we relate? And, you know, especially as an administrator, working with, with the different types of, basically in my case, younger, younger generation, so that was interesting. Um, and then I sat in on, uh, the gentleman from the community foundation wanted me to sit in and present kind of what we do at the school here with our scholarships and our, our foundation. And I was on our, on our dual county foundation, so I just talked about some of those things that we do and, um, just kind of tooted their horn. And then I sat in on the last one with you, which was in open meetings, which is kind of redundant, but there were still some, there were still some takeaways in it in regards to executive session do's and don'ts and, and stuff like that. But it was, other than that, I had a lot of takeaways, so.
Yeah.
That was me, I don't know if anybody else had a, I don't expect you to go through the whole, the whole day, but, uh, if you had something that you got, go ahead and share.
Maybe you'll report out quick if that's a.
I got one on, I said it and went on insurance. Yeah, kind of hit on what we were talking about last month on insurance. Fine print of that insurance. Some of the companies, let me get this, if I can get this right, some companies are getting hit with like sexual harassment cases from thirty years ago and they were the company, they're, they're suing the company that had the insurance at that time. So, say you had a twenty thousand dollar premium and all of a sudden they're going back to these years past with sexual harassment or, or, or. So companies, there's a, there's a, you know, it's in your, it's in your, um, it's in your, um, deck sheet, you know? It'll say this only goes back to this year, this, anything below before that, we don't cover in your current package. They can't react or go say, hey, we covered you then, we're not going to cover anything back then, but from now on. Um, another thing was, um, we talked a little bit about valuations of the buildings and, and do you have enough insurance? And you can get, and I don't have the term, I forgot my papers at home, but you can get a set amount there and I don't, I did, we talked about that, I don't.
Like an addendum or like a little?
Well, no, it's just a, a specific amount, all this is a term that means we pick the price. If we say our school is worth, uh, ten million dollars, that's what we pay insurance on and if the whole thing blows away, we get ten million dollars, so. And you can, you can look at that every year, you know? So you, it's a, you agree to, you do agree with the company that both of you agreed and you will pay premium on that, that your building is worth this much or, so. And that, you know, so there's no, you know, wondering what, what you want for, or, you know, percentage of what you're going to get paid. A lot of talk on that deductible, those things that just skyrocketed, they showed examples of that, they just skyrocketed just like we saw. So really we're self-insuring, you know, a good portion of our deductible every year, you know, so, because the deductible went up so much, so, anyway. Uh, what else? I, I went to the one on what they made legislative changes, you know? They added, and they kind of went through some of that, but this state does fund, um, other non-public schools right now with grants, you know that?
Yeah.
And where did we hear that? I don't know if you.
We heard it in the first session too, he was talking about.
Okay, so South Dakota does fund. Okay, so, South Dakota does fund, has been doing it for several years.
Just through grants, so.
Yeah, through grants, and that budget is, even amount, it started out pretty small, I don't know, it's ten million now, so, so I don't know where that money comes from, as long as they don't take funding away from public education, that's the, that's the main thing.
Right.
Because you're the one that has to serve every kid in the community if they want you to serve them, so.
Right.
Anyway.
Those are yours?
I can go, I took a lot of notes from the keynote speaker, um, I found it really interesting, I know Chad, um, kind of alluded to some of it. Um, he had a lot of statistics and, um, facts and data about, um, you know, the, the, um, overall test scores and, um, success of states that have passed school voucher laws is not good at all. Um, he said it's basically just a subsidy for existing private school kids, the only students that are actually succeeding in the private schools are the ones that are already there, and it's, you know, they're already paying for it, um, everyone else that's in a public school that's moving to a private school is basically just, um, most of them are having, there's a reason that they wanna get out of the public school, and so, um, they have to find a school, which then, um, actually, a lot of them, after like six weeks, they can actually kick them out, um, and, um, he is very concerned that the new, um, bill passed by Congress, the federal bill, actually has some grant stuff in it that our governor will end up deciding to opt in or out of, um, so, it may not be up to private citizens anymore. I went to one, um, with, I think Katie and Todd, on, um, essential elements for school-wide success, it was a lot on explicit instruction, um, there was a big push for a while on like a discovery thing, where you just let kids figure it out on their own basically, and they learned that that is really not successful to begin with, that you're supposed to explicitly in, um, teach things, and then once kids have mastered the skill, then have them do more discovery learning, um, obviously, there's thirteen steps to that, I'm not gonna go over them all, you're welcome. Um, I went to one with KSB School Law, um, fantastic presenters, um, it was on, um, it was called Pain in the App, which is, it was basically on, uh, mental health, social media, um, what schools can do, what schools can't do as far as, um, when students are in school versus out of school, if they can be punished when they're not in school or on school devices, um.
They can be punished by the way-
They can be punished, yep, if, they can be any time of day in any physical location, and that was a Supreme Court decision.
If it's causing disruption in the school?
Yep, if it causes any disruption, and if it is perceived that it will cause disruption, it doesn't have to already cause it, basically. So, that was the big takeaway from that, um, I went to one that was, um, on using, kids using AI as a therapist, and, um, it was terrifying because, um, they are, and they, um, there's chatbots, um, that you can basically say anything, and they're not triggered until you say the word suicide, and then it will pop up with a suicide hotline, um, but they, they have a lot of disclaimers and stuff in chatbots now because of different things that have happened, um, for instance, they gave an example of someone that said that, um, she wanted to kill her neighbor, and the chatbot came back and said, that sounds fantastic, let me know how that works out for you, or something like that, so.
Oh, no.
Um, you know, not, not the best therapist that you want, um, they said that it's, it's accessible twenty-four seven, um, and there's not enough, current demand for mental health support, um, is, is more than the qualified health professionals, and so, one thing they are saying is like, you know, if you, if you are meeting with a mental health professional once a month or whatever, you can talk to the AI in-between with things that you're going to discuss with your mental health professional instead of just using it as that, so, um, they said that schools need to provide a lot of guidance, and educate on, you know, AI literacy and mental health and, um, increase human connection, um, so, that's.
What's your list?
Yep.
Okay, I'll go through mine quick, of course, I went to the first one as well, but I went to unplugged and unhinged, Platt Geddes, they've implemented the cellphone-free cases, so, students have to put their phones in a lock case, um, be, when they enter the school, and then they unlock it when they leave the school, um, it was, they obviously talked about a lot of the logistics around how they implemented it and, and the process. I was more interested in what got them to that decision, um, just learning how, um, how they did that, um, and they just went through a lot of statistics around when, the reason why was they had a situation, um, hopefully that never happens to us, where there was some bullying happening on the mobile devices during school, and so they decided because of that to remove the phones, but then they also did do a lot of statistics around mental health, um, kids aren't worried about if other kids have phones, if they're being videoed, um, behind their backs and unknowingly, or pictures are being taken unknown, or they're missing out on what s- social media happenings are happening, so like, what are other kids posting and what am I missing out on, they removes all that anxiety around what they're missing or worrying about what's happening, um, and that was a huge deal. And then, even during lunches on, on campus, they don't have it either, and it says, it's just amazing how much social interaction happens now, um, without them, and they're gaining social skills, 'cause students now don't have social skills, 'cause they have a phone in front of their face, so, it was just really interesting, and we've heard all the statistics around that. What I, um, took away from that one though is they used a website that kind of helps monitor, um, and I was just gonna run it by you guys later on, I'm kind of filtering the naughty out, so if we have our devices and it, they Google something, it just filters out any negative or naughty automatically. It just like shades it out, doesn't even show pictures, could show graphic, and maybe we have something in place already, but. No, but, oh, sorry, on our computers, they, yeah, I figured we did, so I was just gonna throw that out there, it was just really kind of enlightening, and they went through the process. Students and parents that have questions, they did have, um, pushback, but I, actually, like, in the end, now they're all being thanked for, for doing that process. But he did mention, if you're ever like looking at that kind of a thing, maybe first step is maybe getting a consistent policy and program in place before jumping to that, and I think that's always a good approach as well, um, trying something else before jumping to that. So, yeah, I was thinking if we could just be consistent in our, in our district about checking the phones in the door and putting them in the pouch, like, um, here, and all being consistent in that, all staff being consistent in that, I think there's benefits to that and we can see how that goes, but all staff have to be consistent in that for that to be successful. I went to the open, the Pain in the App one as well, and I was talking to, I think Chad and Katie and Todd even all about it, that lawyer from KSB Law goes and does presentations to schools and, uh, about mental health and social media and what it does, and I think she should come here and do one for our students, she's just entertaining, yet very factual, and I think that would go a long way for our students just to know the bad parts of social media, so, and you guys wrote that down, so, let you take that with. And then I went to open meetings laws, uh, I didn't write down a whole lot of new things, of course, there's just, we're, us as a board have obligations, legal obligations and how to run meetings, so just reassuring of that I knew the right rules, um, and then I did do a board governance, practical tips one too, and that one really just went into what's the role of the school board, what's the role of the superintendent, what's the role of, um, parents, and again, it was kind of things that we already knew, but it was just eye-opening of how they put it in their perspective. One other thing I learned, one little tidbit, I just write down tidbits, is one school, and this is just something to consider, they add ten minutes to their first period of the day, so this is more for the high school level, because there's a lot of kids that are coming from homes or backgrounds that we don't know anything about, and they're bringing a lot of baggage to school, and so, at, having that first period be a little bit longer, letting people come and decompress, do maybe like a team building or welcome chat in the morning in that first period really sets the tone for the day, was what one school does, just to kind of let them be at school and be present at school and leave the stuff at home behind, so, that was, I thought, a good idea. Okay, that's mine.
Do you think the KSB presentation, if we did it for the students, would be good to open it up for parents to come and as well?
Well, probably, yeah. Have a big one. Yeah, I agree, yes, yes is the answer.
So, they all hear the same message?
I think that'd be really important to do, and, and I don't know if that's like, if she's super expensive, but I have no idea.
We've had a ton of presenters staff before, with the moral programs, so.
But really, what I wanted to do is take all those slides and show them to my kids, like, really, that's what I wanted to do after that session, and so, I, I want to do that, I'm sure there's a lot of other parents that want to do that too.
Yep.
I kind of gave them a lecture when I got home.
I did too.
Cause I run your phones too much, anyway, how about you guys, what were your takeaways?
Here's the, you know, one, um, that one is great because a lot of times, you know, we, that always the way that we do, um, they may always be, be absolute polished, you know, product. And, and, and a lot of the, all you do, doing more frequent drop-ins, whether you have a more complexed, you know, um, that's what I'm passionate about.
Like facts, you have real life data.
I went to that one, is, that's the only other different one other than what you talked about.
We all shared, yeah.
Um, I really enjoyed it, rethinking classroom emails, um, it was the, uh, principal at Harrisburg, um, just their approach in how they, I guess I didn't hear you. Just the approach in how they went about changing, not only the, the, what it looks like, but the perception of the teachers and the, oh, you're just trying to catch me doing something wrong, theory, which is not the case at all, and he talked a lot about how conversations that they had since they've moved into this look are way more meaningful than one that a teacher's planned, you know exactly what to look for, you know exactly what they're doing, um, but he said it was a process in, in getting teacher buy-in, board buy-in, um, all that kind of stuff, but it wa- it is something that I would like to continue to explore and look at and, and visit with Mr. Schirnbeck first and, um.
How does that relate to the student evaluation processes that you guys are doing, can easily detach?
No, yeah, yeah, that would-
Yeah, that'd be a thing.
But, um, yeah, it was just, it was really good, all, all the ones I was at was, were very good, um, Thirteen Essentials kind of lost me a little bit, but, um, not lost me, but the fact that there was zero air movement in there and it was, I had to sit like this, I didn't do very well, but, um, it was still, there was still some valuable information provided, so. Pain in the App was very good, I just, I enjoy listening to them, and some of the stuff's scary, and that our kids are, are seeing and doing and don't realize it, how-
You talked about a field day, I sat in one, I don't remember if it's a group buy-in, you might all-
Or a co-op something, yeah.
But they expect like two minutes, but this, this few words in this thing, in this, on, you know, in a, in a message, and it goes to chat, to whatever, deep-
Yeah, to the team.
AI, and in thirty seconds, you've got two pages of everything you want ever in a field day.
Isn't that crazy?
From environment members, but, and we do it, and, you know, we'll do it a phone call over the phone, you know, and just, uh, fully smoked.
It's true, it's crazy.
Just thirty seconds of that, it's going to be longer than a professional.
Yeah. Well, it was a good day for all of us, we learned a lot, I think, yeah. Thank you, all right, now we'll move on to the reports, Mr. Schirnbeck?
Yep, my report is on page thirty-two, and I have, uh, staffing is my first bullet point, and you can cross off K-12 Art on there.
Oh, yeah.
Sent this in last Wednesday, yeah, right now, the only positions that I have open, I've got a custodian position and a para position, so, we're going in fully certified this year, staff is full, which is, not a lot of districts can say that, so, um, next item on here, strategic plan, if you take a look at that last sheet, behind your academic, uh, we met, uh, we met with Gail about a week and a half ago, and just talked about how we added, uh, school management, I shared all of that stuff with her, and then she helped build the scorecard, so we took facilities out and then we put school management in there, um, granted, it was kind of a different type of thing that we created, but at the same time, it was good, she was, she was really pleased with it and she helped us out, um, this is something that we are going to be looking at continually when she comes throughout the year and then gauging how we're doing in those areas, as well as leader rounding, which we are, uh, opening up to, um, our classified staff as well this year, so we're gonna be rounding everybody, um, which is gonna be a little bit more on everybody's plate, but at the same time, we're including Hannah, and she can do the, a lot of the, the paras and take a little bit, so it actually works out really good, so.
I think that's awesome.
Yep, and we set up, uh, our schedule to meet with Gail throughout the rest of the year, so, granted, it's pretty tentative, but we got dates all set for the rest of the year, so we're good to go. Uh, talk, we surplus the bus already, obviously, I have the paperwork, I've, uh, met with Darwin on this, and we've got a little bit of paperwork to turn in, and we gotta send some pictures of the bus once we bore a hole in the, in the block and cut the chassis and all those things, and then we'll get reimbursed for that, which is like thirty-five thousand dollars, so, um, and we've got somebody lined up to take care of all of that, and we've got, I think, till the end of September to, to submit that, it's just a little bit of paperwork on my end. Uh, speed bumps, they have arrived.
Hold on, Chad.
Oops, sorry.
What do you give for that bus, you jump out, you get, I mean, we take it to the salvage and, and they buy it back?
Yeah, I don't, we're not getting anything for-
I mean, we still get something that way, you don't get-
No, we've, we're, Titan's gonna take it, and I guess they've got somebody that's gonna take it, so, yeah.
We get the rebate money.
We get the rebate money. Uh, speed bumps, I've talked to you guys before about our back parking lot and, uh, trying to slow kids down, between just slowing down and stopping at the stop sign at the bottom of the hill here is, is, is consistent, so we've got some speed bumps, um, where we're gonna wait for a hot day to drive those spikes in, and they'll be ready to go for school, so, um, it'll slow kids down. We had almost a couple of accidents with, with high school kids running into, we had a bus driver that almost got hit when he stepped out of his vehicle, so, we're gonna strategically place them and, and put them in, it'll slow kids down, so, uh, it's a good thing, they're not funded, they're not fun to drive over, what's that?
Who does that?
Andrew's gonna put them in.
Oh, Andrew.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know if he's gonna swing the sledgehammer, but we've got a couple of high school kids that can do that.
Got you get some volunteers.
Yeah, yeah.
Rusty ones, yeah.
You can come hold the spikes while we-
Oh, sure.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, concrete work, I had originally had somebody that contacted and, and planned to do the concrete work before school started, got a call last week, they're not gonna be able to do it by the ti- they're not gonna be able to do it all, uh, so, I actually contacted, um, Chad Weisner and had him come over the next day, he said, yeah, I can do it, but it's not gonna be until October, so, um, either way, it'll get done, that's gonna be the front administration here, these steps, a little bit out to the street, and then the second and third, uh, runway from their, from their, from their doors there, all the way out to the street, which is, which is in horrible shape, so, it's not ideal, but it's been something I've been wanting to get done for two years now, so, getting somebody to-
How old is that somebody?
Ooh, I think that far building was built in sixty-seven.
It's chipping, it's, 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 it's all cracked up, but-
Down there, yeah.
And it got thrown with the, you know, the, it was cold.
Yeah. Sixty-seven, I was minus eight.
Minus eight with a-
I was minus eight then, yeah.
Wow.
I think that was read up.
It may have been, yeah.
Anyway, that's my recollection.
Yeah, uh, the gymnastics cooperative, uh, I've been in touch with both Dubrick and Hamlin superintendents, they are taking that to their board. Uh, I've sent our agreement to them, so, we'll find out tomorrow if they approve it with the conditions that we had set at the last meeting, and I've already sent our information into the Activities Association. Just to piggyback everything else we've done today, we have set up some NWE training. It's probably been three years since we've had somebody on site and got some training from the actual map company. And in talking with people going into new positions, just some of the turnover in that amount of time, they're gonna, they're gonna do, they offer everything they could do at virtual or onsite, obviously, the virtual is cheaper, but we're gonna do a virtual training for those that are just getting into it, maybe a start from the scratch, how to, how to use it, and then we're gonna do a more advanced piece, which they gave us some options, and Todd, Todd and Katie are gonna share that with their staff and find out what direction the staff wants to go, what they need to know, so that's coming in September and October to, to follow up with that. And then the other thing I was gonna mention, when these guys were talking about going to the evaluations, I'm sending to the two billing principals and Hannah, not Ellen, to, KSB is doing a thing for principals on school evaluation. You can bring your evaluation tool, and they're also gonna talk about some of the do's, don'ts, and things that get schools in trouble in regards to evaluating teachers, so. It's an all-day event, and they can, they can change the, we can change the tool, and just go on, a lot of their stuff, and you guys alluded to it, it's just been good, they, they reel hands-on stuff, so it was, it'll be good. And then just the upcoming, hey, we're, we're right into it tomorrow. We've got staff meetings throughout the day tomorrow, for the most part, Wednesday is a, is a teacher workday, and then Thursday, we've got the back-to-school fair, which we've, we've made a lot of changes, and we're implementing those, and it's gonna be a little bit more streamlined and easy for, for parents to navigate at the back-to-school fair, and all the teachers will be here from eleven to six on that day. And there will be pictures, I verified and called, called today, so we're good to go.
Did you tell us already, or is there one, like, what's your teacher in-service topic this year or not?
I'm actually going through a lot of the Studer stuff. Tomorrow, I'm going through the, I'm reiterating some of the staff feedback that we got, a lot of the student feedback that we got, and I'm just touching briefly on, on our lockdown situation and some of that feedback, and some of the improvements that we're gonna be making moving forward. And then I've got a gal coming in, just talking briefly about investments, she comes every year, ten to fifteen minutes, she's available, and then these guys will have their staff meetings, and then Hannah's gonna be running a, a meeting for all of the paras as well, so. And then, of course, I've got a number of housekeeping items that I'm gonna go through as well, so.
Full day?
Yes, it'll be a full day.
Yes, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Thanks for doing this, this is, this is good.
Yeah.
Are you gonna, you think that'll be like on the website?
Yes, yep. Yep, it's actually, she should have it on there now, but I wouldn't, I'm probably gonna put it out there more.
Facebook, yeah.
It's just a simple one sheet, here's, here's what we're doing, and I'm sharing that with the staff tomorrow as well, so.
Yeah, I like the, the measure, how we measure at the bottom, too, and like how easy it is, you can just click to that for all of them.
And the feedback that we've got from surveys, and whether it be from staff, from meetings with Gail, has been great, so. It's driving a lot of the things that we're, we wanna be improving on, so.
Awesome.
And I think as much of that, those metrics that we can share, I mean, it, it just builds, 'cause then people say, you know, especially like with the public or parents, if they actually feel like they did a survey and then they can see the results, and there's value in that, but, yeah, this is, this is really good, this is.
The one thing on the academic, yeah, one thing on the academic, it's on the bottom, it says everybody scored twenty-two, everybody's taken a best.
That's something we're gonna have to see after we get our results back.
Yeah, true, yeah.
I'll tell you right now, that's not gonna happen, but. Don't like lowering the bar either.
Oh, I, you know, right.
But we want, yeah.
Can you change that now, or can you put some verbiage in about that?
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause students aren't, students that aren't going on to secondary don't need to take it, and that's what's, who is taking it now, so. Now, I mean, sorry, all of them are now, but only those that were going to post. It's a different population.
The only thing I forgot on here was I usually put the next board meeting date, and that's September eighth.
Yep.
Quick turnaround.
I also like that you move the back-to-school fair after teachers have, after they're in-service, so they have time to.
Yes.
Get their resume?
Breath and organize and.
And not have to be rushed to do that, and then, yeah.
Good idea. Okay, good?
Yep.
Mrs. Han?
It's short and sweet. First, I just wanna put out there that I'm really excited for in-service and excited to see teachers. It's been great seeing teachers popping in throughout the last week or so, and I'm just really excited about the school year. We have a few new students coming in, we have three middle schoolers and five high schoolers as of today. Three of those high schoolers are seniors, so, like that. Student recognition, one of my goals is to continue to further student recognition and just find different ways to recognize students. I know that was something that came up in the surveys that we did with Studer and the students last year. And we did have some students over the summer go to the Service Leadership Academy through the Humanity Launch, and so I just wanna recognize them. It was Miles Decker, Preston Rounds, Malukai Maskovich, Sienna Martnell, Allison Nielsen, Brady Boyle, Amber Slack, and Ella Kirk-Fleet.
That's a lot, isn't normally that many?
No.
Okay.
Pardon me? That is incoming seniors, so I'm excited to touch base with them when they come back and kind of see what we can do with what they've learned there.
Yeah, no kidding.
No, Sienna's a senior, she'll be a senior.
Do they have to apply? Apply or, or get selected or anything, or they just say they wanna go?
A little bit of both.
Okay.
They apply, and then Greg reaches out and kind of determines if they're leaders and if they would represent well, and they all do.
So they go where, do they do it online?
Sioux Falls, yeah, and it's a week-long, kind of immersive, similar to what we do with our senior retreat, and similar to what we did in October when we had Humanity Launch come here.
One of our grads, Harley, was one of the counselors or leaders there, too, I saw.
Yep. And then my last thing was just, last week, I also attended Infinite Campus Training and learned about how to automate our attendance letters and learned about all sorts of reports that we can do that I had no idea existed, so I'm excited to have some time to play around on campus, once I learn the new interface.
Are you excited?
I, I, no, but yes.
So that you learned something new, and that'll help, oh, awesome. Yeah, thank you. Okay, Mr. Ralph?
All right, mine's fairly short again. Joint conference, we already kind of touched on all that and the takeaways from that. Back-to-school fair, again, excited for that day, it's a great day, kids come in, they're excited, get their picture taken. Some of them, it's the first time that they step foot in our building, so I think we have some things in place that are going to be a lot more welcoming this year, and, and it'll be a great day for, for everybody. Athletic-wise, practices have either started or will get rolling Thursday, so. Football started last week on the seventh. Volleyball and cross-country can also start on the fourteenth, and they're planning practice prior to the back-to-school fair, so. Just excited for a new school year and some changes that we've made, and some new curriculum pieces in the elementary, it'll be exciting and cumbersome at the same time, but we'll get through it, and, yeah, just excited to get going.
Is the staff ready for that new, the reading?
We've had trainings, they've had trainings, I don't know if you're ever really ready.
Just go and try it?
Yep, yep, it'll come, it's gonna take time. I, I just keep, don't get overwhelmed, don't stress over it.
Right.
It will. Yeah, I mean, any change with curriculum is, is tough, but this is looking at things, doing things a little bit different, and intervention groups, and, you know, really targeting where the struggles are at for kids, so it'll be good.
Thank you. Ellen, you have one next?
Yeah, it was a food service application, and actually, just before the meeting tonight, that was approved, so I'm getting the free reduced apps out. And we're gonna label all them per family, so we make sure everybody gets one, 'cause we've had a couple situations in the past where somebody will say, well, I never got one to fill out, so, anyway, we just wanna make sure every, every family gets one. So we'll be doing that the next couple days before, so, 'cause those will be available at the, we'll have them at the back-to-school fair. So, and Jeannie and McKenzie, they have like the first table where they're handing stuff out, and so they'll receive their free and reduced application at that time when they go through there. And then the ones that don't make it to the back-to-school fair, then we'll make sure we get those in the mail, so they receive one, so. Next couple things, just wage and benefit premium updates and budget updates, just, just the time, it takes a lot of time to sit down and do all that stuff, so those are, that was all done.
So you took your time to do those?
June and, yeah, or July, I should say July and August timeframe there. And back-to-school ordering, I think we're sitting pretty good with everything, well, as you see, when we're approving bills. I mean, you know, most of our capital stuff is pretty much, the majority of it is done, we probably have ninety-five percent of our capital budget spent when school starts.
Right.
So, yep, so Mickey's getting, I think, all that stuff all done, so we should be ready to, ready to roll.
Awesome, okay. Good deal, thank you. Wade, have an update on NESC?
Yep, okay, we met on July twenty-first in Watertown, a regular meeting, I guess financial report, nothing really significant there. We discussed a little bit of approval of contracts, we hired a new occupational therapist, Angela Ingles. We talked to, we talked about, hired a pair as well for Webster. They did an amendment to our Unit One contracts as a result of negotiations, so they updated that with negotiated items. Then we had our annual meeting as well, we re-elected President Aaron Sherman from Elkton and Vice President Penny Tean, both had those roles previously. Went into our budget hearing, we did a review, again, of, of the general fund and sped fund balances. Discussed the low fund balance, that's currently in sped, which is what led to the higher assessments for twenty-five and twenty-six. That's, I did wanna clarify our assessment. Last year, after the IDEA money, we came in, I think, at one forty-two, three oh-six. This year, after the IDA money, we are at one eighty-nine, three eighteen. So we're up forty-seven thousand over, over last year, so from twenty-five to twenty-six on our assessment. Assistant Director's report, he, similar to us, reviewed the open meeting laws. Director's report from Aniki, reviewed current and future needs of technology for the co-op with the consulting group. She gave a bit of a building update, we're looking at a new architect, Basin from Hayti. Co-op Arc was currently too busy, reviewed reorganizing current building and surplusing equipment. I guess that's about it, any questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, well, that's the last of the list there, otherwise, the next meeting is September eighth. Maybe we can just chat about what that meeting might look like. Maybe Chad, you can update us on the student count at that time, after the first week of school. Open enrollment counts, but we'll probably have some open enrollments to approve. Meal rates, we don't need to do, I just had that on my to-do list. Otherwise, I didn't have anything else. Throw it down, do you guys have any needs for the next meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, I was mumbling away from you. Student count, open enrollment count, that's all I really have.
I suppose in September, I mean, that's probably when we'll wanna like set our committee date, committee meetings, and get into the school year.
School year.
I, I think it's usually a good time to do that.
Okay.
Or focus group meetings, or any of that stuff, so.
Yeah, you're right. And then maybe, I don't know, Chad, how you're feeling about doing a state of the district again, that was like a fall activity? No, it doesn't have to be done for September, but.
Yeah, we talked about making it during the year.
Oh, sorry, I didn't write it down that way, I didn't say that at all, I didn't say either way, every other, maybe we said that, didn't we? So, not.
Yeah, I don't know if you, I, I think you got the thing built, I didn't even want to adjust, it's, it's.
Yeah.
I don't know if you, I thought it was a good, good communication, I thought. I mean, I, but I don't, you know, I understand the time, I think it's kind of when you think the timing works as far as.
There's something reportable that's significant.
Or when you have time to do it, I guess, I'd say, I mean.
Okay, so then, yeah, we can, focus groups and academic committee, we can schedule those next meeting?
Yeah, I've already got the dates, I might just do them.
Okay.
I'm just, you know, thinking about what, what you would put in there for what, what turns off the years or whatever. I mean, this academic thing, we just added it.
Even just sharing how scores are a lot better, or not better, that's not the right word, have increased since last year.
When did, when did you do it last year? I'm trying to even think.
I wrote fall.
It was in the fall.
That's all I remember. I just wrote we do it in the fall, but I didn't write every year, every other, so that's my.
But that's my, I'm absolutely fine with that.
You totally could've.
I know, you did such a nice job the last time.
Okay, that's it, any other business? Take a motion to adjourn?
Joel?
Joel, will you, on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Propose, motion carried.